Today is February 21st, 2017. The time is 7:13 PM and the regular meeting of Greensburg Plank Commission is called to order. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to sign all electronic devices and attend to the legislative session.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city request that participants in this meeting could be voluntary, anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of the room. There's a survey there in the box. This time, I'm going to jump, just go roll.
John?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Jamie?
Ron?
Present.
Bruce?
Here.
John?
Here.
We were all emailed amendments on the 16th. Ron also gave us a copy that we're going to look at. If I had any additions or corrections to those amendments that were emailed. Having heard that, I'm glad, welcome a motion to approve the amendments as emailed with the corrections that were in those emailed amendments.
Salute.
Okay, Roy made the motion out of second. Mark's active. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Having heard that, the amendments are approved as emailed with the correct. Okay, new business. Item number one, public hearing is considering a petition for a secondary plat proposal of a state subdivision located along the south side of Park Road from approximately 520 feet east of County Road 150 West to approximately 1,300 feet east of County Road 150 West. Don?
This is a case that you heard on primary plat in December of 2016. The property in question is located on the south side of Park Road, which is here, and slightly east of County Road 150 West is here, and it's outlined on this map in orange. It's roughly 14 acres if I remember correctly. The proposed subdivision would create five lots with the one on the west being relatively large, 4.36 acres I think it is. The others are just a little over two acres each. They're pretty deep. They're 100 feet plus wide each one. In your December meeting, there were a couple of conditions on the approval of the primary plat. One, there are no roads proposed as part of this subdivision. Everything would be served off of Park Road. There are no new sewer lines. There's an existing sewer line along the south side of Park Road, and there is an existing water line along the north side of Park Road that would serve the development you did at the request of the fire department, require the installation of two fire hydrants that would be on the north side of Park Road, and those have been installed. The other condition that you placed on the approval was the submission and approval of a stormwater management plan. The petitioner has submitted a stormwater management plan. However, the stormwater management plan did not address the detention requirements that are included in our ordinance. Our ordinance requires that a 100-year storm flow be released at or below a 10-year storm rate for development. I have had a discussion with the engineer that did the hydraulics, hydrology work on this, and I have not heard anything further. So as of the moment, I am not aware of any approved stormwater management plan. Beyond that, everything else appears to be in order.
The commissioner, does he have any questions, Ron? Did the easement help get wider?
The easement down in this area is 55 feet wide as shown on the current plat. And I believe originally that was 40 feet, and it's now 55. So yes, it did get widened.
Any questions, Ron? Does anyone in the audience have any items to address or speak to this petition?
Where can we come in, do you all know me? We did do the water analysis. We have Marty Man here who did the water report, the stormwater report. He will come up and give his findings on the report. We're not here to argue or cause problems, but we have an issue that we think he can address and possibly make a difference on the retention of that area. So I'll turn it over to Marty.
Sure.
Anybody show me also?
My name's Martin Mann, PE landowner group engineering out of Columbus. Appreciate being here tonight. I certainly have a lot of respect for what you guys do. I've served on boards like this myself. Drainage is a very complex issue in all communities. We do the best we can with ordinances and standards. Sometimes you get situations that kind of fall on the margins. In my professional opinion, this is a project that kind of falls in the margins of drainage because even though it's technically a subdivision, from a drainage standpoint, it's five houses being built next to each other. There's no streets being proposed, there's no storm source systems, there's no centralized collection system. When I first got this job, I recognized that it was a low-impact project in terms of what we look at, in terms of drainage impacts, primarily because the size of the lots and the size of the overall subdivision versus the amount of impervious surfaces that are being added in the form of homes, patios, and driveways creates a relatively small increase in impervious surfaces increase. So when we have a situation like this, what we try to do is we try to do a computer model that simulates the existing conditions versus the proposed conditions. We try to look at both hydrology and hydraulics. Hydrology is the phenomenon of rainfall being converted to runoff. Once it gets to a centralized conveyance like a creek or a ditch, it becomes hydraulic. So what we did in this situation is we got LiDAR mapping, which most of I think you guys are familiar with, laser mapping, one-foot contour mapping, inspected the drainage area, determined that there was a significant upstream watershed in Winchester subdivision that was also draining through the site. So we delineated sub-basins, both the project site itself and the upstream drainage area, and divided that into a handful of sub-basins. Then we measured the land surfaces, impervious, pervious, crops, roads, driveways, soil types, the slope of the watershed, things like that. We put that into a computer model called TR-20, which has been around forever, put out by the Soil Conservation Service back in the 60s. It's a pretty good model. And so we ran the model for the existing condition, proposed condition, for I think 39 different storm events, something like that. Two-year, five-year, 10-year, 25-year, 100-year, maybe even 50-year. And so what we tried to do is say, okay, for all these storm events, and we get storm water, we get rainfall data from the DNR, bolt-in 71, standardized design rainfall data that we use. So we run the model, and what we're trying to do is determine what the impacts of the project are, both on the site and in the downstream drainage system, which in this case is an open ditch that subsequently drains down through the golf course from the site. And so when we ran the computer model, what we determined is although on the site itself there's some impacts in terms of increases in runoff rates, because of the dilution effect of the upstream watershed, by the time the water gets to the ditch that runs through the site, the increases in hydrology are less than 1%. They're in the order of 0.2 to 0.5% increase. So if it was a, if you had 100 cubic feet per second, you might get 100.3 or 100.5, something like that. Then what we did is we ran computer models on the two downstream culverts, County Road 150 and the driveway, which is right at the downstream property line. And we ran a Federal Highway Administration, HYA, culvert performance model. Basically, it looks at the flow rate for a given storm event and determines how much the water goes under the culvert, how much goes over the road, what kind of velocity increases you get. So we put the small increase in the hydrology that we got from the hydrology model into the HYA model, and what we determined was the increase in height of the water was 1/100 to 2/100 of an inch, or I mean of a foot, which is, I don't know, less than a quarter of an inch. In my report, I related that impact to, it's kind of apples and oranges, the Department of Natural Resources looked at 0.14 feet as sort of the threshold of negativity in terms of floodway activities. Now, this isn't a floodway activity, but that's a pretty good rule of standard. We try to, you know, obviously, if you put a storage shed behind your house, you're going to have some impact on runoff, but it's going to be very small. Well, in this situation, what we got was some increase, but a very small increase that did not translate to a hydraulic problem or flooding problem. Had we found an increase of 1% or more, or above that 0.14 that DNR uses, we would have recommended detention. We did model detention, we did discuss it, we looked at the pros and cons from a practical standpoint. The problem with detention, and it makes no difference to me, I get paid either way, I'll get more money if I design detention, so I'm not advocate for not, I'm just trying to, you know, provide the facts and answer questions. But in this situation, the houses, they're going to utilize natural drainage patterns, swales at the site, wood, pretty wooded, grass areas. So water's going to come off the four corners of the house and dribble out into the yard and go down into sort of a natural drainage system. From a detention standpoint, if we were going to do detention, the really only way we could do it would be to dam up the ditch, because a lot of the water's coming from the south of the ditch, and a lot of it's coming from the south side of the houses, and they're all, they're all going to trickle down to the ditch kind of in a different path. Some will be sheet flow, some will be little swales. The problem is, is normally in a subdivision, you've got a street, and the water from the houses goes down to the street, goes into an inlet, goes into a storm shore where you can intercept that storm shore and put a detention pond or a basin in. In this case, we've got a diffuse surface water coming down to the ditch, so there's really no place to collect the water for detention other than damming up the ditch, which we can do. We could dam up that ditch and create a, either a detention pond, or a dry basin, or a bio-swell, or something like that. Concerns I have about that is you're going to wind up disrupting the natural drainage situation in order to accommodate a reduction in flow that is, based on the study, not really needed for any improvement or protection to the downstream system of properties. It would be kind of a, it would be kind of like a solution waiting for a problem to occur. And you've got some unavoidable potential consequences of detention. Now, every detention basin has consequences. In this situation, I don't believe those consequences are being outweighed by a public benefit. Consequences in this case would be, you've got farm tiles, and I know the farmer's concerned about farm tiles being blocked. If we dammed up the ditch, we're going to wind up creating a temporary impound during heavy rains. We'd probably use like a 24-inch pipe with like a four-foot-high dam across the ditch. And so when it rains really, really hard, water would stand there, potentially blocking farm tiles, I understand one of which maybe drains the basement. There's a concern about corn stalks and things getting into yards, debris, trash, of course, that occurs with any detention. You've got an existing driveway at the downstream end of the site, the west end of the primary, you've got an existing driveway, which I visited six or seven years ago when I was working for Mr. Kramer at the same site. And it already is sort of providing a de facto detention by blocking that channel. So if we did do detention, it would be a little bit redundant, it might provide a little bit more holding back the water than what that driveway does. But essentially, you've already got a certain de facto detention effect out there. So in summary, the project is a subdivision, but to me, it's a subdivision in name only because when I think about a subdivision from a drainage standpoint, most of the time, it's got a new street, new storm sewer systems. Streets create most of the impervious areas because they're directly connected to the outlet. You think about water coming off a house, has to go through the yard, a lot of that gets absorbed in the yard, it absorbs on the plants, it tends to get filtered. Whereas in a typical subdivision, you've got 32-foot-wide streets, which creates a lot of impervious area, the water's concentrated into a pipe, water comes shooting out, excuse me, through a, you know, maybe a 24-inch pipe, and you have a lot of erosion effect, you have a large increase in downstream flooding potential. This is kind of the opposite of that. You've got relatively well-established, good-sized downstream infrastructure and a relatively low-impact. The other thing that I noticed when I did the modeling was there's a certain, we call it beat the peak, it's not as popular as it used to be, but essentially what happens is by the time the water from Winchester gets down into the flood crest at the site, most of the water from the site is already gone. So there's a certain concept that, and I've done a few of these studies, probably 30 or 40 of them over the years. And what, and I didn't do it on this one because I thought the merits were so strong that they weren't necessary, but we could do that. And that is that, you know, you put detention in, what you're doing is you're holding the water back so that when it comes out, it's coming out more in line with the timing of the upstream watersheds. And so your detention actually has a reverse effect because now you're adding on to the crest of the flood as it comes down from the watershed. Usually, when you're this far down the watershed and you have a low-impact site, you kind of want to get that water out. And so that's, and that's why the numbers reflected what they did. Relative, you know, maybe a 10% increase in runoff from the site itself, but that 10% relates down to less than 1% because of the dilution effect and the timing effect of the upstream watershed overall. So our recommendation was not to require detention. I told Ron when we talked on the phone, it didn't matter to me, I'm not an advocate, a politician, or a lawyer, I'm an engineer, I try to take my profession professionally, I completely respect what you guys do and what determination you make, it won't make me cry whatsoever, whatever you guys decide. But I did want to come here tonight and make sure you were properly informed and answering the questions that I could because this is, you know, very important to the community and to the developers, and I want to make sure I get it right. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions, be happy to try and fill in any gaps that you might have. I apologize if it gets kind of weedy. This stuff is about, and your ordinance is really good, by the way. It's not, I mean, Indianapolis is 700 pages, and it's not quite that robust, but it's a really good ordinance. There's maybe a couple of things that you could add down the road. But, you know, this project's definitely on the margin, it's kind of a gray area project because, and I said to Ron, you're absolutely right, Ron, it's over 10 acres, it's 100-to-5 release rate. But the reason we go to 100-to-5, and I was involved in writing these ordinances back in the early 80s, so I've been doing this, you know, I've been on both sides, I worked for two different government agencies, DNR and the City of Indianapolis, and, you know, have been involved in boards like this. And it's always hard to, you don't want to set a precedent, and that's why it's important to have a deliberative body, that's why it's important to have professionally certified reports, because you don't want every Tom, Dick, and Harry coming in saying, "I don't need detention." I just did wellage optical last year, and we put underground detention in, and it was the opposite situation. A lot of increase in runoff going to a very subpar drainage system in an older neighborhood. Had we not put detention on that, we would have had flooding. Absolutely, we would have had flooding. Commerce Park, we just did a detention basin for those guys. So, you know, I'm not against detention, I probably designed more detention in Greensburg and Columbus in the last 20 years than just about anybody. I'm a big advocate for it, but I think sometimes you've got to take a step back, you know, when you get these kind of gray area situations and see if you're going to do more harm than good.
Mr. Mann, on this letter I'm looking at, dated November 21st, requesting your modification based on our ordinance, 123175. You guys, you're stating some specific references. I was trying to link through this report and try to correlate item 1A and 1B, and I'm struggling, so.
Well, the references on A1, Andy, could you come and elucidate that just for a minute? Because we put that together as a team, and A references Andy provided, and when I wrote the report, I didn't use the same characterization, so there's a little bit of the apples and oranges aspect to the.
Is the copy of 123175? I'm just trying to relate where that is stated in the actual study, if it is.
I don't know that. I did not. I discussed in quite a bit detail the ordinance, but I'm not very good at lawyer stuff. I tend to be more like a farmer, so apologize for that. I wasn't really sure how this thing was going to, you know, get resolved in terms of, you know, the variance request, it was something that just came up last couple days, so I apologize for not being more clear on that. You know, what it comes down to is there's a provision in the ordinance that says, that sort of a generic provision that says, you know, don't, sort of like Hippocratic Oath, don't do any harm, you know, don't destroy the natural environment, don't mess up drainage patterns any more than you have to. And, you know, I had a discussion in my report that sort of says, okay, if we determine that detention isn't going to be tremendously needed, is it at least sort of a okay thing to do? In other words, why not just do it just to be on the safe side? And then I got some information about the farm tiles and the concerns about the corn stalks and things like that, and when I looked at the site, realized that the driveway that was there six years ago when I looked at it, it's still there, it hasn't washed out, looks like it's in pretty good shape. So, you know, you've got a pretty good drainage system out there. I don't see the houses are going to really disrupt it, the driveways I don't think are going to disrupt it. So, you know, I actually tried to figure out a way of designing detention without having to dam up the ditch. The problem is you get in this over-detention requirement, you know, people say, well, why, why aren't you just releasing rate at the existing runoff rate? Why is it 100-to-10, or why is it 100-to-5 in this case since it's over 10 acres? And the reason that we did that back in the day was a recognition that impervious surface not only increased the rate of runoff, but also the volume, and that doesn't always get accounted for by just saying we're going to release it at the same rate. In other words, if we say we're going to release it at the existing 10-year rate, yeah, flow-wise, you might be not increasing. If the volume rises, you're going to get a lot more water over a lot longer period of time. So we decided, and I say we, government agencies and the people I work for, that we do over-detention. The problem with over-detention is when you get a 13, 12-acre site like this, which most of it's not being developed, most of that detention isn't treating the part of the runoff coming off the impervious surfaces. Most of it is that 100-to-5. You're kind of penalizing the site by requiring detention for runoff coming off areas that aren't being developed. And that's where it gets to be, you know, a pretty big-size retention pond for the purposes of treating runoff from areas that aren't being developed. Normally, what we do in situations where most of the site, like if I have a big industrial park, and a third of it's not going to be developed, it's just going to be left alone, we exempt that out for that over-detention, that 100-to-5 or 100-to-10 like they have in Columbus. We just, we apply that to the part of the site that's being developed. And I had that conversation with Mr. May, and he said quite, you know, legitimately, no, this applies to the whole site, you have to meet the 100-to-5 for the whole site. And or, you know, so I thought, well, before that, I thought maybe we could do a small detention basin in the backyard before we get to the ditch, maybe individual little, what we call micro-basins. But if we're going to do the whole side, 100-to-5, since a lot of the sites south of the ditch, you're going to have to pretty much do something in the ditch itself. And that's where we sort of said, and I actually put a model together and sized it and said, okay, if we're going to meet these strict standards, we need to dam up this stream with about a four-foot-high dam, which means the water's going to back up and potentially get into these drains. So I thought, well, that's kind of like, you know, shooting one hand for the sake of the other hand in terms of, you know, downstream benefits. And there's so much water coming downstream, you'd only be able to knock that flow down a little bit. So, you know, what we would do, if we did do detention, what we would do is we would look at what the impact of onsite detention pond would be in terms of reduction of the overall hydrology of the watershed, and then we would knock it down that much. So we might knock it down, you know, 1% or 2% as it's coming through the valley. As far as impacts downstream, I don't see it would be a huge benefit. I think it would be, I don't think you would notice it one way or the other. I don't think, without detention, you would notice, you didn't have detention. If you put detention in, I don't see, you'd see a huge reduction downstream because you've got so much area flowing through there that you can only knock it down so much. So I apologize for the cumbersome, you know, the clumsy references in that letter, it was kind of put together hastily. But in my report, and I did write a letter to Larry also that summarized this, essentially it said, it's not terrible to put detention in, but it doesn't really achieve any benefit, and it does cause some potential unintended consequences. And that's why, you know, if I was sitting, you know, in a seat of judgment, I probably would, not wanting to set a precedent, I would probably say, you know, this probably is one of those gray areas where it's not really suitable for detention. But I completely respect whatever you guys do, it won't bother me one way or the other.
Do you have any additional questions, Mr. Mann?
I greatly respect you guys coming on a night of IU game. I'm a Purdue graduate, and I still follow IU.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this petition?
I have a question. If the water's running off, where's it going to?
It's going to downstream to.
Is it going to the golf course?
Yeah, all that, field and everything goes through the golf course.
How much more water is going to be added on that area?
From our houses?
From this.
From the houses.
About 0.2% on average.
Okay.
0.2%.
I just wanted to make sure that's where it was going, not just on another house or somebody, you know, like that, so. Because I do know they have some flooding down there on that back nine, but. Okay, thanks.
My concern was when I looked at the front, we touched basin on it, it was the culvert where the driveway goes across it. I noticed there was some riprap put in place there to keep the erosion down. And if this were to be approved, would it help to put more riprap upstream?
I think, I think it's always good to put riprap in. I love riprap. If they put more riprap in that dam out in California, they wouldn't be fighting it. I'm a big fan of riprap, the bigger the better. It's hard to quantify, I can run a computer model on it, it's as good as input data, but riprap is the greatest thing I've ever made to keep erosion down. So I, you know, I don't want to write a check for the developer, but if we needed to add a little bit of extra riprap down there to help keep that, you know, culvert from scouring and maybe provide some goodwill, I think that's fine. I don't have any objection to it from a technical standpoint.
Listen, a fellow has got to get to his property, and then you know, down at County Road 150, where it's filled with lava, and you can run it over to the golf course where eventually drains that.
Right.
You don't want to create problems for other people.
Well, and you don't want to be the guy that approves creating problems. And I understand when you're sitting on this body, you're going to get the phone calls. Ron's going to get the phone calls, and that's why I take what we do very seriously, because I can sit here and blow smoke up you guys' skirts, and then you guys get the phone calls, and then some guy in a $600 suit calls me and tells me I'm in trouble. I don't ever want that to happen. So that's why I try to be a straight shooter. And had I believed professionally that there was any real risk to downstream impact, either flooding, infrastructure damage, property flooding, debris, I would never, ever take a paycheck just to say something because somebody's paying me. I've been doing this for 30 years. My reputation's way more important than a paycheck. And I don't ever want to get that phone call that somebody, you know, kid Brown, or, you know, I mean, I, big, I mean, I just got done talking to an attorney about the two kids that drowned up in Edinburgh when they went over that dam, and I told the guys, I said, "You guys, get some signings up, you know, it's, you know, it's, people die in floods. It's not just petty stuff." And most of them die going in their cars over roads that flood, the driveway. And even that little culvert at the downstream end of our site, I assure you, somebody could go off that road and die, even in that little tiny culvert. And so, you know, you've got to take this stuff seriously because we're not talking about setbacks or signings, we're talking about, you know, real-world hazards where real people get hurt and die, and property gets damaged. I've been involved in more lawsuits, and I can tell you where houses get flooded, and I was involved with one, you know, last year where a guy died, he hydroplaned on a road down in Henryville because the county didn't maintain their roadside ditch. And I told the county, I said, "Pay up, you know, your ditch wasn't maintained, water went over the road, the guy, kid hydroplaned on his way to high school, ran into a Mack trap, killed him." And I, and you know, who would ever think of a drainage ditch along a state highway, County Road intersecting, could cost somebody to die? And every time I do a project, that's what I think about. You know, somebody could die if I screw up.
Any, Plank Commissioner, any additional questions, Mr. Mann?
Got it, Ron. You guys want to need to recall me down the road, let me know. Follow-up questions after this, let me know. I'm a completely predisposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak or ask any additional questions on this item? All right, Ron? All right, Ron? Chris, you had a chance to look through this.
I've taken three, basically, I've taken four, man. We're basically down to maybe a couple options. This is, I've written through this two, three times, and I said, proceeds are legal. I take this as written request to, for the modification or the exception as it's stated in 13.75. So, he confirms that the time listed stated right today. Guess what we're at here is, approve it, grant this, make a motion, see if we're able to approve, grant this, or skip the ordinance and say, keep that.
Or continue, or... I guess those are both choices.
So, I guess I'll ask the other commission members their thoughts on the information spread about landmark group, and their feelings on whether requiring detention or not.
Well, speaking strictly from the ordinance standpoint, we would have to require detention unless we would grant, we would grant relief from that, because Mr. May stated that there will be an increase in flow, and I believe that the ordinance says we can't increase the flow.
The ordinance, in fact, requires a net decrease in the flow after development. From a 100-year flow, 100-year storm event, which is a 1% probability occurrence in a given year, to a, I don't even remember ordinance, Marty is a 10, it was a...
Five, four, 10. 0.2%.
To a five-year, which is 0.2 probability, 20% probability occurrence in a given year. It's not linear. A five-year storm is a 1/20 of a 100-year storm. It's probably, it's probably logarithmic, but...
It's, it's, yeah, I mean...
But it is a reduction. And also...
But I guess the point here was that the increase would be insignificant to the, basically, we might be creating more problems than we would be solving, if I understand this correctly. So, I guess the question becomes before us, which way do you want to lean?
The one thing the party discussed with you that's quite interesting is the peak concept. And I believe, Marty, you said you did not actually do that analysis?
I didn't, I, I mean, I did it by default, but I didn't really analyze it.
There is possibility, as he said, because this, the peak from the 14-acre site, and it's actually two smaller pieces, because there's two different outfalls to this thing, but let's just say for, say for this mission, that peak will occur pretty quickly. The total drainage area that goes through the south part of this property is quite a larger area, and that peak will occur later, and there is a real hydraulic possibility that detention will, would increase the total flow, even though we reduce the flow off of the 14 acres, because that water's gonna come out later on. And stormwater, storm events are a bell curve, basically. They start out not much, and they peak, and they come back down. There is the possibility that delaying that water will actually increase the flow later in the storm, that the remainder of the site is a deep flow. But we don't know that without doing more specific analysis.
Right, we could certainly look at that relatively quickly.
This approach, petition, you heard.
Good evening. My name's Steve Dickman, we installed a tile installation for Sturgeon properties. What we got, when you put in tile, you actually lower the water table, which makes your soil more like a sponge, and so you're gonna have less water flow than you ever had before because of the tiles that's just been installed. Now, granted, there are tremendous rains that can not make that work, but generally speaking, your flow will already be less because of the tilework that's been installed. Another thing, you do have some basement drainage and some tile that's existing under that soil, but we have no idea where it goes as previous to our work, and so what damage that may do, I don't know.
How many tiles do you have, do you know, that's running, that you put in that field that fed into that water?
You mean a footage?
Opens, you know, where they filter out in there?
There's just one outlet.
One outlet? Is that down?
I correct that, there's one for Mr. Sturgeon, there's one, we had a, we found an old tile that was deeper than our, than our outlet could be, so we have a, an area where it leads up into an outlet. So, any other questions?
Chris, do you have a review of the landowners? As far as their request for that, granting the exception?
In my opinion, it would be, part of the ordinance requires them to put it in writing and submit proposed findings of fact, which has an order, has an doctor, take, as your own findings of fact. They would bear the burden of presenting sufficient evidence, factual basis to grant modification. As the statute, to read the ordinance, there's eight criteria that have to be addressed. I've read it quickly, but when I glanced through the eight criteria, it sounds like they've touched on all of those that may not be, you know, lined up like this, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
Myself, I guess I'd be in favor of granting the exception to the detention, because from what I'm hearing, I'm not sure that we gain anything by requiring detention pond, and may actually make it worse as far as backing that water up that doesn't come from this site, but because we're blocking off the flow through the ditch. That's just my opinion.
Does anybody in the audience have any additional questions or comments in regards to this petition?
Having heard none, I'm opening up for a motion to approve the secondary plats. With the exception? With the exception of the detention based upon the request dated February 21st in my documents report. Some moved. I have a motion made by Boyd, I have a second. I'll second it. Second by John. John, please take note.
John?
Yes.
Bruce?
No.
Roy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Kevin?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Next item of business, unstateable report.
We thank Bruce for, yes. We have two properties on 6th Street, one at 1301 North Anderson Street, which is the northwest corner of 6th and Anderson, and we have another one at 626 West 6th Street. According to county records, each of those two properties are owned by the same people. You see in the upper view here, this is a porch on the west side of the 1301 North Anderson Street property, where the porch roof has experienced a structural failure. And this is a window on the west side of the same building that's broken.
That's the wall of probably the east side.
The porch is on the east side?
Yes.
And the window is on the west side? And also, here, there's a hole in the roof in this area right here. I confess to being dilatory and haven't notified these property owners yet, but I will send a letter off to them instructing that they are not in compliance with the building ordinance, and explaining that they need to resolve these issues, or the city will have to intervene. Any questions about this one?
Is there a safety problem with that porch that drove faster, man, it looks like it can fall down any time?
It could. The good thing is it is on private property.
No way, listen, for sure.
There was someone residing there approximately about 30 days ago.
I'm reluctant to ever make that assessment.
They may not admit that they did.
This is the property, I've already forgotten the address. 626 West 6th Street. This house has a gable, I'm sorry, hip roof on it, so this is a load-bearing wall, and it's a little hard to see in the picture, but you notice the wave in the wall, there's something seriously structurally wrong here, and that needs to be addressed. At the very least, the roof system needs to have an external support until it can be properly addressed, but there's, there's something really wrong down in here with that wall. As I said before, this building and the previous one, county list, is the same property here. Questions?
You said you had not sent them a letter yet, right, so you're about to do that?
Yes, that is right. We will notify them, they need to address this situation.
The first item to be addressed, though, is there any way that we can, we have a right to address, I'm gonna put caution tape or a deck, or advise them not to enter that property, where the porch is falling down?
I'm glad you asked me that question, Bruce, because since you asked me, I can turn to Chris and say, Chris, what can we do? I'm not sure you can prohibit people from going up there, and we can, we can take steps to eliminate degress. I'm not sure we can prohibit people from entering there.
Well, like you say, the people, the worst people stay there legally, I don't know, I just know that they came and, you know, but I'm...
I didn't rattle the door, as they say, to know if the property was secure. Quite frankly, I wasn't interested in walking up on that porch.
No. They, their vehicles have been called, since this has occurred, so they're, you know, they just backed up and went on somewhere else, I don't know.
Bruce, did you know there's a meter over in the left of here?
I do know.
And I looked at the house, and I can't answer that question? I should.
I'm asking those, those who...
Of course, everybody, there can be, there can be squatters that don't need electricity. Anything further on these two? The next property, or actually, two properties are located at 120 South Franklin Street and 124 South Franklin Street, that I believe is the city cafe. It's actually the property to the rear, and this property, if you look at county records, and this property are owned by the same individual, but I met, when I was out there looking at this situation, I met a gentleman that said that he was the owner of this property, and that he was in the process of selling that on contract, but until a contract is completed, the county records will continue to show the seller, is it? So, so it appears to belong to the one gentleman. There is a building that has been removed, I think this is the old roof line, and I think this wall came on out, and as you can see, this brick wall is badly unsupported and really, I, quite unstable. And this is a slightly different view of the same thing. I believe this is a flue over here that's a part of this building, this is the 120 South Franklin building, so this needs to be removed, this area cleaned up. Also, a little hard to see, but in this area down here, this wall is a bearing wall, and it was common practice with brick buildings to insert, let's call them timber girders, timber beams into the brickwork and bear on that brick. This area needs to be repointed, there's actually kind of a hole in there, and if we step back, you can kind of see a little bit of an irregularity in the line of brickwork here, and up here, you see something weird is going on where the bricks aren't paralleling longer, there is damage. At the very least, that wall needs to be repointed and the holes in it repaired, and done something to make more durable and more structurally adequate. Again, I have not gotten letters out, but I will, and I don't know that you all need to take any action with this regard, I just bring it to your attention because the meeting worked out this way, and we will get word off to these people and see what kind of response we get.
Item 3, the board's planing record.
At this moment, we have no business for next month. Every time I say that, it changes. I gave you all your, the contact information I have for you, and if all of you have it, please update that if necessary and get that back to me, and I can publish that to the rest of you if you want good contact information for each other, or I don't have to, it's really whatever you would like to have there. The city records about when your terms run from and to are a little fuzzy, so if anybody has any information they care to share about that, I think we'd like to get all of you on your proper schedules and get the turnover organized in such a way that a minimal number goes off of the plan commission any one year. Now, of course, there's nothing that I'm aware of that says you cannot be reappointed to the same seat here on the commission, but we'd like to get better handle on expiration dates. Other than that, I don't think I'm aware of anything. Do you all have any questions to me?
Thank you. Item 4, other items of interest in subdivision numbers. Have you heard, I'm, 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 I have the motion to adjourn being...
Well, I wasn't paying attention, and I apologize for that. You all passed a motion to grant the waiver on the stormwater management requirements. Did you ever actually approve the subdivision plat?
I thought the motion was to approve it with the exception.
That's the way I took it.
How did it actually state, John? Was that...
Moved to approve the second, perhaps, the second plat with the exception.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I thought, I should have took care of that.
All right. Now, Larry, please...
Well, I know you want to get out of here, but I'm gonna take this time to thank the board for their time, your cooperation, and your consideration, and Ron. Thank you. King and I, I very appreciate it. And just take the time away, your home, your dinner, all, we, thank you.
Good evening. All right. Any other items? Having heard none, I think the motion is adjourned.
Some moved.
I have a second. We're done.